I will call the Cookville City Council meeting for Thursday, October 16th to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Baji. Councilman Walker.
Here.
Mayor Wheaton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eldridge. Councilman Gilbert.
Here.
Three present.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Jesse Haywood of Kingdom Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, thank you. I'm gonna be praying from Philippians four. I'm just gonna read it and then I'll pray. It says, finally, brothers and sisters, whatever is true, whatever is honorable, whatever is just, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is commendable, if there's any moral excellence, and if there's anything praise worthy, dwell on these things. Pray with me. God, thank you for these people that love our city, love our community, that want to see it become better. God, all of these things matter because people matter and they affect people. So I just pray that as they go through their lives, that these brothers and sisters before me would dwell on what is true, on what is honorable, and what is just, on what is pure, on what is lovely, and what is commendable, and that these things would be the guiding principles for their life, for the way they lead in our community. And so, God, we just give you all glory and praise and ask that you would shower your blessing on this city in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Kingdom Community Church, we're a brand new church plant down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Haywood. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes? Do I have a motion? You two are gonna have to speak. Derek, can you figure it? Okay. Motion made by Councilman Walker, second by Councilman Gilbert. I think you can figure out who said what tonight. Any discussion from the council? All right, go ahead and vote on that.
Your votes correct. Right. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on October 2nd, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Eric.
Don't move.
Second.
We're just gonna go in that order. Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion from the council? All right, go ahead and vote on the minutes.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Five B, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-250916, amending the zoning code, section 204.15, garbage waste containers and illustration 24 dumpster detail. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Council. There have been no changes since first reading. We've had no calls since first reading or comments. Recommend approval on second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion. I'm not gonna call y'all's names out. I think y'all got it. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five C, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-250917, amending the zoning code relative to driveway surfacing requirements for residential developments in single-family residential zoning districts. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Again, we've had no changes since first reading. I've had no comments since first reading. Recommend approval on second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from council? All right, all vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you. For the consent agenda, six A, consider approval to purchase bulk deicing saw utilizing the statewide contract number 507, contract ID 66848. Six B, consider declaring a surplus one 2017 Mack front load garbage truck. And six C, consider approval of final balance change order for the 2021 Cookville Community Development Block Grant Sewer System Improvements. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
You're gonna have a second. Thank you. Any discussion from council? All right, go ahead and vote on the consent agenda.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, seven A, consider approval and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for a limited phase two environmental site assessment of the 39 Depot Street property. Mr. Mills.
Mayor Council members, UES Professional Solutions LLC recently completed a phase one environmental site assessment for the 39 Depot property, which we purchased earlier this year. They've now submitted a proposal to complete a limited phase two environmental site assessment. UES notes in the proposal that based on the past use of the 5.07 acre tract, the site is considered an REC, which is a recognized environmental condition, which means there's likely presence of a hazardous substance or substances. The scope of services included includes the correction of a site health and safety plan and a job safety analysis. Ten soil borings, which are depicted on the screen, will be done to identify and/or confirm impacts from former uses of the property. I think we all know what the property was previously used for. UES indicates that the work can be completed within four to six weeks, and the fee for completing the limited phase two is $42,700. The phase two ESA is necessary to determine what, if any, remedial actions will be necessary for TDEC approval to develop the property. And based on the findings from the limited phase two, additional environmental assessment work may be required. And I would request your approval and authorization to execute the agreement with UES to complete the limited phase two ESA.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Discussion from council? Okay, I'll go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven B, consider resolution R-251014, authorizing the participation in the public entity partner, safety partners matching grant program. Ms. Garrett.
Mayor and council, this grant offers a 50% matching funds for the purchase of safety vests, chainsaw chaps, earmuffs, and chainsaw mitts to comply with 29 CFR part 1910 and 1926 of the occupational safety and health standards. Funds will also be used to purchase traffic combs for public works, maximum reimbursement of $3,000. Funds will also be used to purchase traffic comes for public works, maximum reimbursement of $3,000.
Thank you. Yeah. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made. Do I have a second? Got a second. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven C, consider resolution R 251016, authorizing the participation in the Public Entity Partners Property Conservation Matching Grant Program. Garrett.
Yes, Mayor and Council, Public Entity Partners offers a 50% matching grant for expenditures from January 1st, 2025 to April 1st of 2026. Purchases must be related to property conservation and our cybersecurity initiatives. The maximum reimbursement available through this grant is $5,000, based on a total city expenditure of $10,000. The city would appreciate the consideration of using this grant to be reimbursed for the following purchases. Security doors at City Hall, security cameras at Public Works mulch site, and at the East 15th Street recycling site. The total purchase price for these installations was $11,953.80, and the grant would reimburse $5,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
All right, continuing on, Ms. Garrett. We've got seven D, consider authorization to apply for and participate in the Tennessee Department of Labor and Workforce Development Drug-Free Workplace Program.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this program is designed to promote safe workplaces, safe work sites for employees. There is no cost to join the program. This program has been shown to reduce medical costs, absenteeism, and increase productivity. An employer certified by this program is entitled to a 5% premium credit on our workers' compensation insurance policy. Applications must be submitted annually to the Tennessee Bureau of Workers' Compensation. And all employees must have at least one hour of training. Supervisors must have an additional two hours of training. And all employees must be trained within 60 days, 60 calendar days of implementation. And I would be happy to answer any questions, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
I mean, what did you tell me that would save us annually almost a 5%, several thousand dollars?
Last fiscal year, it would have been $16,000.
Oh, wow. Uninsured from three weeks. Nice. Yeah. Good job, then.
Thank you.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven E, consider awarding bid for two 15-ton HVAC units with air dampers for the Kane Creek Gymnasium. Mr. McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight requesting your approval for purchase and replacement of two 15-ton HVAC units at the Kane Creek Gymnasium. This request is for the equipment only. City personnel will be installing this equipment. The gym opened in 2008, and these units are from 2007 currently on site. So they're over 18 years old and are reaching their end of life. We're facing several frequent and compounding operational failures with these units. The main bearings for the lower assemblies have failed and are now obsolete and not available for replacement. The one unit has a gas ignition system issue that will prevent heating as soon as the weather turns cold. And then we have duct degradation as well, and you can see that in this picture right here. This is the picture of the units that are on site right now. So there are two of those units, and we're replacing both of those. There will be some duct work done as part of this project as well. We solicited bids and received proposals from six firms. We recommend approving Tennessee Home Solutions as the low qualified bidder meeting specifications for the cost of $37,206.25. This is a budgeted item, and the low bid is under budget, so I respectfully request your approval. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? As someone whose daughter plays volleyball in the winter at the Kane Creek Gym, I appreciate you getting some, make sure we've got some heat in there, because it could get cold in there. I don't know that gym is utilized a lot, so glad to, we can do some updates for it. And we got a motion and a second. Go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven F, consider awarding bid for City Hall switchgear. Mr. McDonald.
Yes, this request is for replacement of the switchgear here at City Hall. The current switchgear was installed when the building was built in 1969. Here's a photo of the current switchgear, which is downstairs. In the mechanical room, this replacement project is a critical issue for the safety of maintenance personnel and the reliability of power here at City Hall. Specifications and design of the new system were completed by Gary Loftus of Maffet and Loftus Engineering. Bids were solicited and received from three qualified firms. After bid opening, Mr. Loftus contacted the apparent low bidder, which you can see on this slide right here, which was Lee Company, to make sure details of their bid were consistent with the specifications. And after a discussion with Lee Company, it was determined that they would like to rescind their bid due to an error in calculations on their part and the equipment quoted on their part. So the next low bid, Van De Vorty, was contacted, vetted, and recommended by Mr. Loftus. As a result, we're here tonight recommending Van De Vorty as the low qualified bidder meeting specifications at $152,800. Mr. Mills may have some additional comment, and we have a representative from Maffet Loftus here tonight to answer any technical questions you might have, but I request your approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? I'm gonna ask for a second. Yeah, okay. Got any, do we have any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Council, anything you need to add?
Well, I would want to note and note a thanks to Carl Haney, our Electric or Energy Director. He did have some discussion with the Van De Vorty, and if you remember originally, we thought we were gonna have to have City Hall closed on a Friday, which we were not looking forward to. And Van De Vorty, and I believe Chad, you can confirm this, is indicating they only will need to be, have the City Hall power off on Saturday and Sunday. That's a big plus for them being the second lowest bidder now or winning bidder that's doing this. In fact, the difference is worth it, I believe, just to not have to close City Hall for a complete day.
Any other comments? Okay, go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven G, consider granting an easement to Upper Cumberland Electric Membership Corporation, Corporation, excuse me, on the water plant property. Mr. Turner.
This easement is needed for the generator project at the water treatment plant that we've been discussing. And Upper Cumberland Electric needs a written easement in order to rework the service entrance, and I recommend your approval of this.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? All vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven H, consider approving estimate from UCEMC to rework the service entrance at the water treatment plant as part of the generator project. Mr. Turner.
Yes, this is the work that needs to be done in redoing the service. Right now, the intake and the water plant are on two separate meters. This is working to get them on one meter so the generator can power stuff at both facilities, both locations. The total cost estimate they gave us was $31,801.75, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? All vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven I, consider awarding bid for Interstate Drive Sidewalk Projects. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Council. The Interstate Drive Sidewalk Project will complete sidewalks along both sides of Interstate Drive from South Willow Avenue to South Jefferson Avenue. It also includes a segment along the western portion of South Jefferson Avenue from Interstate Drive to South Walnut Avenue. This also includes pedestrian improvements at the critical intersections of Willow, Walnut, and Jefferson. This project has a 360-day timeline. It's a TDOT Local Programs project funded through STBG Funds, requiring a 20% local match. The city opened bids for this project on September 16th, 2025. Four bids were submitted, with Rogers Group being our low bidder at $1,963,925.50. This bid has been reviewed, and TDOT has acknowledged the bid, so it's ready to move forward. So I recommend awarding the bid to Rogers Group as the low bidder. Happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the public on this? Discussion from council?
We're gonna get Interstate Drive tuned up. I was there today. The war line's coming and.
Yes.
sidewalks, paving.
Need to remind everybody, yeah, we're working.
In case you wait, this a year from now will be a different story, but it'd be worth it.
We're gonna fix the debt.
Yes, we will get it fixed. Thank you for letting everybody know that. Got a motion and a second, so we will go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And our final item, five J, excuse me, seven J, consider approval and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for construction engineering inspection, CEI services, with HMB Professional Engineers for the Interstate Drive Sidewalk Project. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Again, for the Interstate Drive Project, we received proposals for construction engineering inspection services for the project. After our review, HMB Professional Engineers has been selected to provide CEI services. HMB has provided CEI services to the city for both phases of the Spring Street Project, and we have been satisfied with the firm's performance. They have submitted a proposal with a cost-plus-fixed fee amount for $246,276.62 for the provision of CEI services associated with the project. That's based on the 360-day construction schedule. If the project were to exceed 360 days, a supplement would be required. I recommend approval and authorize the city manager to execute this agreement with HMB for CEI services. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? All vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the agenda portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to the council on any non-agenda items?
How are y'all?
Good.
Awesome. Awesome. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Trenton Strode, Cookville, Tennessee. I stand before you tonight as a resident who believes in Cookville's growth should not only be measured in square footage, but in square opportunity. Most of us have read the recent report in the Herald Citizen about the old fairground site. Thirty-seven acres of prime city land sitting quietly while developers propose another blend of retail, hospitality, and office space. It sounds good on paper, but if we pause and think, we've seen this story before. How many times have we paved over possibility only to realize later that we've built stores that people can't afford to shop in because they can't afford to live here? That's not just poor planning, it's poor stewardship. Cookville's working families, healthcare workers, and young graduates are being priced out of the very community they sustain. The irony is striking. We'll approve new developments to attract labor, but yet our own workforce can't afford the rent to stay. That's not development, that's displacement in dressed in progress. Now imagine a different picture. That same land transformed into a living neighborhood. Affordable, mixed-income housing, walkable streets, small green spaces, homes that teachers, first responders, and TCU graduates can actually live in. That vision doesn't compete with growth, it sustains that growth. Because when workers can live near where they serve, our businesses thrive, our traffic lightens, and our sense of community strengthens. If we keep treating land like a short-term transaction, we'll end up with an economy that is built on receipts instead of roots. But if we treat it as an investment in the people who live here, we create permanence. Some might say, well, retail brings revenue. True, but so does stability. Every dollar saved by a family who can afford housing gets spent back into local stores, local churches, and local schools, and that's the multiplier effect of humanity over profit. You all, as the city council, have influence with your county counterparts. You can encourage them to see this not as a $12 million property deal, but a $12 million chance to build the Cookville that we claim to believe in. Because the absurd alternative, and we can be honest, is another strip of asphalt, empty storefronts in 10 years' times. While students and nurses sleep in their cars between shifts, and that's just not efficient, that's immoral. So I'm asking you to speak up for a future that remembers who Cookville is built for. So let's turn that fairground into a fair ground. Where every resident, regardless of income, has the right to call Cookville home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I like the traffic lightness idea. I think that's definitely something to.
Just imagine a big complex in the middle of the city where people can get in and out amazingly, and it's central right there.
Thank you for speaking. I appreciate it. Anyone else who'd like to address the council? Any announcements from council? Pick it on the square.
Pick it on the square is coming up. I believe that's the last Friday of this month. So sports habitat for humanity. You can go get you a golden ticket, I think, at any local bank, let you pick up a bowl early. That's what I would recommend doing, to skip the line.
Well, thank you.